Ready? We'll call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Mayor Westergaard.
Yep.
Wolkmann.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yep.
Reese.
Yes.
Hoss.
Here.
Okay, public forum. We have a message from the treasurer.
I'm Dickie Caton from the South County Treasurer's Office, and I'm asking for your vote this year in the election, mostly in the primary election. I've been in the office 44 years, 16 of which I've been treasurer. Chris is my first deputy, and she has been in the treasurer's office 25 years. The reason I'm asking for your vote is because I'm being contested. In February, I had to fire a girl, and she's now running against me. The only thing is, she's telling kind of half-truths out there. She says she's being let go because she was selling Advocare over the counter. Well, it was a lot worse than that. There were many other things and many other reasons, and some of which we have found on her desk since she has been fired. She had probably 12 different checks that were stale dated, some as far back as 2000. We checked into these, and the vehicles have either been sold and resold already, or there was only one that was still active, and that was a $50 check. And we could still get that straightened out on the computer system, and we just had to call the people and get a new check there. There were many other things. She was always on the cellphone, and I asked all of the girls not to be on a cellphone because we're there to work. And she didn't like that because she was always on the cellphone, either texting or talking, and it was not pertaining to work. So what had actually happened then, she did take an Advocare deposit and put the whole deposit in the motor vehicle fund. And if she had just gotten it back out, there wouldn't have been a problem. She left it in there. And it went on my semi-annual, and, well, it just wasn't good, you know? And I kept asking her, "Why didn't you just do something? Why didn't you tell me?" But she had been written up two years ago for doing personal work at work, at the office. So I think she knew she was on thin ice, so she didn't want to tell me. But after I heard about so many of the other things, after I'd written her up two years ago, she was actually really mean to all the other girls, and I said, "Well, I never knew." And they said, "Well, of course, she's not going to do it in front of you." So there's part of that, too. It was just if she came back, how would any of us work with her? And I would never trust her again. So I just wanted people to know what was going on. I do have a copy here of mini-sheets that I asked the county auditor, or county auditor, county attorney, if we could show these. And these are things that were written in the past, leading up to what was going on. And so I don't know if you guys want to look at this. In the primary, if you are not a Republican, we'd ask that you change because the Democrats don't have any contests this year, they don't have anyone running. So Lisa and I are both running on the Republican ticket. So if she would win in the primary, then I'm not even on in the fall. And so I just, it's very important to, it takes two minutes to change, to vote, and then you can change right back when you're done. So, and we have some of those absentee ballots here tonight. If, you know, anybody's interested in me leaving in here, whatever you want to do.
We have a couple here.
Yep.
Yeah, just go ahead.
And I do have a few flyers. I don't know, can you, can you put any flyers up around town?
Post office, probably.
Sure, you can put them wherever.
I just have a few places that maybe you could put those. And these are the absentees.
I think they don't do it for campaign for elections, do they?
Post office?
No, I don't.
We get your picture in there, and they want you.
Say, "We won't put up anything here at City Hall."
Okay, I understand. That's fine. But this is just places that you do know that you can't put them up.
But I don't, I don't know if, can the city actually, the city can't put them up, though.
No.
You guys personally can do whatever, but the city couldn't be involved.
So, yeah, post office or whatever. I didn't leave a whole bunch. But are there any questions on this that you have, on her being fired, or?
Most of it was on Facebook.
Not a lot of it was, yeah?
Pretty much.
I'm really surprised you could share personnel, something like that, to the public.
Because it was all open meetings, we can.
Okay.
I have checked with the county attorney, and I, and especially again today before I started, you know, talking to the cities. Yeah, because it was insubordination and misconduct that, you know, she'd worked there a long time, and I think she just thought that she didn't have to follow the rules like everyone else. So it didn't matter how many times I had asked her. And what I'm saying, when she was wrote up two years ago, I just had finally gotten tired of telling her every day to stay off the cellphone.
I've gotten wind of a lot of that that was going on up there.
Yeah. You know, and if there's an emergency, that's different. I understand, you know, and they can use it, but not just to be talking on it.
Thank you for your service.
Okay, thank you. Do we leave?
You can go whenever you'd like.
Okay.
You don't want to stay?
Yeah.
We can't say the same.
But I can take.
Okay, we'll go on to consent agenda. Any additions or corrections? Nope. Not any motion to approve?
Well, excuse me, there was one additional bill wrote on there, paid Terry for the rolls for the Saturday meeting.
Oh, okay.
I didn't get it.
I didn't either. Oh, I didn't either.
It was on Saturday.
Oh. I make a motion, we approve consent agenda.
Second?
I'll second.
Pick one. Roll call.
Okay, Wolkmann.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Hoss.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Okay, we have to have a resolution regarding the urban renewal plan?
Yes. So what this is, is the sheet that was on, on your table tonight, and we would look at the side that says Exhibit A. And this, this is the proposed amendment to our urban renewal plan. It's the one sheet that was on the table.
Oh, okay.
Really, just, just basic stuff that's going to explain what we would use the funds for, for our next project. So the improvements at Camp Creston, including construction, new bathhouse and storm shelter facilities, and additional camping spaces. Okay, so that's what the use would be, and then Point Two says the extension of the expiration date of the urban renewal plan for an additional five years. So that could be up to five years additional that we, we could receive TIF funds. We're not proposing that we would use it for that long. The bottom shows the amount of obligations that are outstanding right now, and these are general obligation debts, not, not revenue debts, just general obligation that we have, $589,000 outstanding, constitutional debt limits, $5.57 million. And this, the proposed amount is $400,000, and the actual cost is not supposed to be that high, but we do want to have this be a little bit higher. This would be the maximum amount that we could seek in TIF funding. And we were looking around 260 on the, on the bathhouse, and it was around 72 on the camping space project. So...
That hasn't come up for bids, though, yet. No. That hasn't come up for bids, or it will come up for bids at the time, right?
On which portion? Yeah, certainly, yeah. Yeah, that's actually, we'll talk about that a little bit later. Finally got a, a meeting set with our engineer to just start discussion of the, of the layout of the building. So that'll, that'll be happening yet this summer.
Mm-hmm.
So with that, the resolution sets a date for a public hearing, and the, and the date for public hearing would be the first council meeting in June. In the interim, we would have, we would offer a consultation session to the county and the school. That's a procedural requirement, that, you know, understanding that when you're using TIF funds, a portion of the TIF funds are basically what would otherwise go to the school or the county. We have to offer this consultation session. So we will offer this to them. Generally speaking, they don't attend the consultation session, and if they have any questions, we would just answer. But, anyway, that'll happen here in the next couple of weeks then, too. So this resolution, though, would set, would set the date for a public hearing to be the first council meeting in June, and just a procedural thing, then, that the, the title of the resolution would be the one that's on the page, not, not the one on the agenda. I had not received this as of Friday yet, so...
So it would be like June 1st or 2nd?
June 2nd.
June 2nd.
Everybody's clear on that resolution? Not we need a motion on Resolution 1417?
Yes.
I'll make that resolution.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Stankin.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Wolkmann.
Yep.
Hoss.
Yes.
Okay, we have the concrete bids at Camp Creston. We got some discussion, Jerry?
Well, we're getting questions from the public and also from some of the contractors, wondering, first of all, for the new, the new members of council, we kind of dealt with this about a year ago. And the agreement at that time was, we were getting the bids on the table, and then we have one time since. That was when we did the sidewalk down Speaker Park. And it's kind of being mishandled when all of a sudden you have people come up to you and say, "How come I didn't get, how come, how come the bids are already open?" And I didn't even know, at first I heard about it, I didn't even know they had been opened. There's, you know, it's, you know, I don't, I don't have a problem with employees bidding on it and all that, but, you know, there's questions being asked, is this a conflict? Well, I don't know. When we set a budget, that kind of tells everybody what it is, or what we're, what we're projecting that we're going to spend. And, you know, there, there's other issues come up. I mean, like, for instance, final discussion. When I had one gentleman ask me, you know, "Who inspects our contractor's work?" Anytime we have a project, before we make final payment, somebody has to approve it. Who inspects, like Lon's? Do you agree?
Yeah, we would walk through the project.
Just like you'll say, I mean, I had no answer for him. I said, "Well, generally, the, the department head of that would take, you know, to approve it," I would assume. Their comment is, "Well, does Ruth Green know what a number four rebar is?" I doubt it. I don't know what number four rebar is.
Sure.
It doesn't look good from the outside, and especially with the little bids, and talking about it down here at City Hall before, before we even know about it.
Just understanding, though, that's, that would be our common protocol for everything...
Open it before we get to the table?
For everything other than anything dealing with...
That isn't what, that isn't what we agreed to last week.
Understand, sure. Like I say, I, I completely forgot the notion, Jerry, and I admit to that. When we, when we wrote up the spec, it, it said that bids would be due at 2:00 on that, on that Thursday, and when bids are due, it's very commonplace we would open them at that time.
So then every one of these contractors could have walked in the door and asked them, "Who got the bid," right?
Sure. Some of them were. Stevenson was here, and Barry was here for the opening.
Because it actually said in the council minutes it would be opened, and they'd be read at 2:00.
Not at council minutes, but it did in...
It was in that package?
In the bid, yeah.
Yeah.
And it, and it didn't say they'd be read, it said they were due, but I understand your point, Jerry, and I would, all I can say is that I forgot that before.
I think from now on, I mean, we need to follow what we agreed to and have the bids open at the table.
And I like that idea, I guess. I, you know, in my past experience, they were all opened at the table.
That's the way I do it, that's the way I do it.
In this case, you know, there wasn't another witness, Stevenson Construction, you said, was here to witness it, so, you know, I guess, you know, at this point, this particular bid, because of that, I don't have a problem. Otherwise, I would, guess I would have said, "Let's redo it."
The, the, the procedure is there such that we would open them as, as staff, and that way you go ahead, and you know what, know who the bidders are, you know who probably is low bid, you have a chance to review the bid, make sure everything's correct, get any of your questions answered, if you have that beforehand, and, and then also then check references on the, on the low bidder. That's why we have usually opened these things beforehand, and we've, we've done this on, I guess, all of our engineered projects have been done this way.
Sure. We did that with FEMA. We sat down here for, I remember, two hours, opening bids for FEMA for those, and all the contractors were here, and they all asked questions. The engineer was here, but this wasn't an engineer project, so...
What if, what if we, did, did we say the bids would be opened at 2:00?
No, I said they were due at 2:00.
Okay. So what if when we bid a project, we advertise that they're going to be open at 2:00 on Thursday, when they are due?
Mm-hmm.
So then, there's no question in anybody's mind when they're going to be open.
Sure.
I mean, I'd, I'd be comfortable with that also, or, or do it at a council meeting, but then if you do it at a council meeting, then, you know, we're, we don't have the opportunity before the council meeting to check out references and that type of thing. But would, would that, you know, be...
I had also kind of taken this, Jerry, and make, correct me if I'm wrong, that you want, that council would like to open them at the table if the employees were bidding on it. I mean, otherwise, we, we do quotes and bids regularly, but is it a special deal if the employee was bidding on it?
I think it would be better to the public, to be honest with you.
I, I understand that. Like I say, and I just throw myself under the bus, Jerry, because I forgot it.
But there was another contractor here, so nobody scratching different numbers, and all that.
But that, but that doesn't always happen, John.
Right.
You can't guarantee that, you know?
Well, I've been around, and nobody changed any bids. Whatever they were, they were. I've never seen it happen.
Yeah, but I guess it's not for our benefit, it's for the public's benefit.
Right.
You know what I'm saying?
And usually, when they do bids, then the contractors are all here, and then they ask questions, and they don't want to come at night, and...
But that's why I said, either, either do them at the council meeting, or whether an employee is involved or not involved, or specify in the bid that they will be open at 2:00, and you are welcome to attend that process, or encouraged to attend that process, employer or not. Because, you know, if I was doing concrete work outside of the school, you know, I'd definitely be at the bid opening, so I know then if, if I got the project or not.
Or has someone that's close to you, though, be there?
Right, a representative.
Looks like it just slipped through the cracks. I certainly think it was unintentional.
Like I say, I would, I have no, I have no explanation, Jerry, other than I forgot it.
So what are we gonna?
We have to have a motion to accept a low bid.
Are we going to open up, I don't know, a lot of the bids, I know that probably don't need to come to the council meeting, but like, you want to put anybody involved at the city employees, or? I would like to see the bids opened up on the table, whether buying a pickup, or...
And that's fine, just understand that it affects the timeliness of being able to proceed. Because whenever a question comes up at the city council meeting, then, nothing can be ordered until a question's answered. We would hope to have all the questions answered before.
It's time to see if we can compare apples for apples, and make sure they're all on board at the same project.
And I guess, you know, we could also plan the projects, you know, if we open them tonight, and plan the projects accordingly, you know, we'll approve them the following meeting, if need be.
Sure.
You know, I mean, add a couple of weeks to the project timeline, I guess. I don't know.
Which is, you know, when time allows, that's great.
Right.
A lot of times...
But sometimes it won't.
You know, we want to proceed quickly.
If they come in there to see if they got the bid or not, what kind of questions would they have? I mean, they'd already have the bid in, and it'd be too late to ask questions?
No, it would be us usually having questions of the bidder.
Oh, okay.
So it would be us having questions of the bidder, and if we don't know who the bidder is, it gives us some time to do a little bit of checking and look at some of the work.
Sure.
Because we sell that old junk more, we're going to take bids on that, right?
Mm-hmm.
What about the red pickup?
The red pickup, the old police car, I've talked with Big Iron, they're going on Big Iron.
Get it out of here.
But any questions about, any questions for Lon, and I know there, there's got to be some concern about him doing this work, you know? I'm sure it has to be raised, but...
And it's come up before. I, I think if we, when we advertise, and just advertise that the bids are going to be open at 2:00 on Thursday, May whatever, or what, you know what I mean? Why do you look like you have something to say?
I guess I figure I'm surrounded by enough integrity of people that I don't think any of this stuff is a real concern. I think, I, I know it's for show, I understand that, I know it's for, for us to make sure it's above board. I guess my, my feeling about this is, yeah, I, I think we, keep it simple, we'll do it like what you suggest, I understand that 100 percent. But you're always going to have some sort of distaste for whatever happens, because Lon's part of, part of the city, and what would get me upset, if the work for the city didn't get done, then I would have a problem with, with them doing it. But in the past, they haven't had any issues with that. They run a business off the side on their own, that's up to them, it's not up to us as a council. We accepted their bid, we accepted what, how they, what they determined, and that's, that's up to us to decide that. And again, if we want to make sure that we're open about, let's put, like you said, and instruct the, "Scott, nothing's open until that time, and everybody that shows up, shows up." But if nobody shows up, then it's, then it's done. It's, we've given everybody a fair opportunity, that's all, that's all we could ask. And like I said, I, I understand what some people think, but again, my concern is, does the other work get done? That's when I would have a problem with that. If they have this outside business, more power to them, and that's the way I feel. And again, we've got enough people here that are honest, hard-working, do the job right. I'm not concerned about them not doing the job right. That, that to me relieves the message. So I know what their work is, and if we're going to take some heat because we, of, of the opening, well, let's take the heat this time, and we'll prevent it for the rest time.
Right. Very well said. Lon?
My only thing that I'd like on record is, you know, we've bid on things in the past, and anything we've done, we've always done it in a timely fashion, and good quality work. You know, one of the questions come up, Jerry, "Who's inspecting it?" When I'm doing the job for people, I don't really feel like you need to inspect it, because I'm going to give you the best work I can give you.
I understand that, Lon, but in fairness, your competitors have to have theirs inspected, and they're saying you need, you need to...
But Scott did walk through, and if you measure, if you measure the sidewalk that I did last year, I lost 700 bucks, because it was, I think it was 30 or 40 foot longer than what the actual bid was. Scott says, "No, you're bidding the project." I didn't argue him. I gave you that, Smith.
I'm not debating the quality of your work or anything, I'm not debating that. I'm passing on the fact that your competitors need, are playing the same, same field that you do, and you should be subject to the same thing that they do. And that's what I'm saying.
And I think I am, because Scott, Scott did the final inspection on that.
I asked a question, who, who inspects? I didn't know, I didn't have an answer for him.
And I think in the past, you know, Scott has relied on me to look at projects, too, you know, that other people have done. I know when we did the Stone Pier project, I, Scott had me go down there. I kind of understood what was going on, and...
No, you've done, you've done fine work, got the part of Lon out here, it's fine, the sidewalks, everything that you're doing, I got no problem with. But there's questions being asked, and I don't have answers for them.
Well, and I think one of the things you need to look at is, if it's a low bid, you know, you gotta, you've got to say to the public, "Look at this guy's doing this." I think I was, well, $500 on an out-of-town, but the next closest city of public person that lives in the community, I should say, is, was $5,000, you know? The highest one was $53,000, which is like $10,000 difference.
And I remember right, if I remember right, that sidewalk, your bid was 10 grand under, under 10 points.
Yeah, yeah.
So I mean, I, I'm not debating your quality or your bid. I'm just asking the question that I'm being asked.
The road guard, I think everybody was happy with it, you know, and I just wanted on the record that, I mean, we're going to give you the best quality work we can give you.
Well, I, you know, I really don't think that's the issue. I don't think that, I think there's just an appearance.
Yeah.
And that, that breeds questions.
But you still got to look at dollars, then. You're, you're looking at dollars, then.
Right.
And if you're getting a good job for $5,000 less, what's the complaint to the public? Tell the public that, you know? It's all you got to do.
Okay.
Only work is there.
Yep, absolutely. We need a motion to approve the low bid.
I'll make that motion, second.
Roll call.
Stankin.
Yes.
Wolkmann.
Yep.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Hoss.
Yes.
Stankin, sorry about that.
It all happened to you.
Hold that.
Ordinance 467, this is our second reading?
Second reading.
Pour some vanilla on that glass.
That's pretty good, Jerry. Vanilla.
I need an answer about down the road here. I, you never really clarified that. What did you decide, at the table, or at the time of opening?
Well, we'll advertise, make sure we'll advertise time of bid opening, and we'll take the bids of employees to the council.
Okay. If a city employee is involved, it'll come to the table?
Right.
Otherwise, it's just...
But, but unless we're under a real, like you said, timeline, I, you know...
I'm looking for clarification, not...
Right. That is confusing. But I, I think... Marcia, you're absolutely right. I mean, we didn't really set, set a precedence there when we, when we talked about it, you know, and...
I thought we did.
I guess that's what I took.
We're going to notify them at 2:00, we're going to...
2:00, and if they want to be there, they're there. If not, no matter what.
But that, but you're saying that if that's a city employee involved, though, right?
Well, anything with city employees, we bring it to...
City employees included, because then every, that, I mean, I guess what the rest of you think, I mean, because that's, that's going to...
That's going to mess, that's going to be more confusing. I think we ought to leave it at 2:00, they open it up, if they want to be there.
If, if, if it makes everybody a lot more comfortable to open these special concrete bids at, at the city council table, we will do that.
Well, you all don't sound like you're in agreement on this.
Well, it doesn't.
They don't all have to agree.
You had a comment?
In the bid, it should say when or how it's going to be opened. It shouldn't be, if I get a, a bid from a city employee, it'll be different.
Yeah, I agree.
It should stay in the bid.
I mean, it's a simple, it's a simple sentence to put in the, put in the...
I'm not as a city boy, right? I'm busy as a...
As a business.
Yeah.
At 2:00, everybody's invited to be there, those that are there are there, those that don't, so be it, and that's, just like, if it's going to be in Scott's office or the mayor's office, that's the way it is.
Anybody can show up.
Anybody can show up.
And, and I guess...
We can say that we encourage you to show up for the bid opening.
It should be advertised that way.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, is that an agreement?
That's what.
Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah.
And, and I agree with you.
Exactly.
Okay.
We're gonna make a motion.
Do we need a motion on that?
It's not an engine anyway.
That's not an engine, we'll just make sure we do that.
Well, it was part of the discussion.
Right, it was.
We got that part.
Okay.
Okay, we're looking for ordinance four sixty-seven, this is our second reading, we need a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second? Roll call.
Woltman.
Yes.
Hoss.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Resolution fourteen eighteen's on our bridge.
Yes. Okay, fourteen eighteen is, uh, this is about that federal grant to, to redo the bridge on Quincy Avenue, so that's that gravel road north of TCT. Okay? That bridge is on the city limit lines, so it's a shared, shared jurisdiction bridge between us and the county. Years ago, twelve, thirteen, fourteen years ago, we started to apply in this city's behalf to the City Bridge Replacement Fund. And, uh, the county, county applied on our behalf to the city fund, and eventually we worked our way up the list, and we were awarded this grant that funds up to eighty percent of the project, up to a million dollars. Now, it's not proposed to be anything like that, they're looking at a project expense of around six hundred thousand dollars. Um, we had agreed with the, with the county supervisors about cost share on that twenty percent match, and basically our, our cost share on that will max out at twenty-five thousand dollars. So, um, just going through a couple things in, in this federal regu-, uh, federal contract, I'm on page nine. Number one just says the county's gonna be the lead agency. And number two, or excuse me, number three stipulates what the county's gonna do, they're going to be responsible for development and completion of this project. And that's the Quincy Avenue Bridge over Indian Creek. Top of page ten, number seven, is saying, and, and that the county and the city must pay for the project costs not reimbursed by the Highway Bridge Fund in a mutually agreed upon manner, so we'll discuss this Sack County twenty-eight E here in a second. Um, and then the other, the other issue is number eight, that the county would let the project for bids, but it happens through a Iowa DOT bid letting. So, other than that, Aaron's reviewed the agreement, and we're good to go, recommend approval.
Just an accounting question, if I understand, the money comes to the city, that we write the checks out for everything?
Other than that, it's gonna end up being the other way around. It's, it's a city grant, but the county's gonna take the lead, and all money actually funnels through the county.
Okay, alright, that's.
And actually, the county's gonna take care of the entire project, and they'll end up billing us for our twenty-five thousand dollars, and that would be a.
So, so there's a chance they could lose the bill?
I bet not.
Bad chance.
We'll make a motion that we approve, uh, resolution fourteen eighteen.
Second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Woltman.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Hoss. Thank you.
Yes.
Fourteen nineteen is the twenty-eight E agreement?
Is the one with the county. That starts on page nineteen, a few things to highlight on this. Uh, so on page nineteen, it's issue number three, where they're talking about ownership. Again, this, this structure is jointly owned by the city and county, future maintenance responsibility is shared equally between the city and county. Uh, historically, we haven't had any maintenance on that, and I don't really know what future maintenance there would be on that either, but there's always a chance.
And is that the way it's always been too?
We've, we've never paid any maintenance on that. But I don't know that there's been any maintenance on it.
Probably why it needs to be replaced.
Could be. Uh, number four's about the administration. Again, this designates the county as the lead agency. Uh, Sack County engineer is the administrator of the agreement. But also, the Sack County basically will take care of project design too, and that's probably the little give and take on this, is that if you had any input into project design, Sack County's probably gonna just take care of it all. But they have certain requirements that they're gonna have to meet, and, and you'll all look at this thing and say, why is the bridge built that big? It doesn't need to be that big. But they're meeting certain requirements.
They have cut back a little bit from what they started with.
It was gonna be pretty big.
Yeah.
Uh, number five, uh, five A, where the project design, again, is done by the county or their consultant, and I think they're using a consulting engineer on that. Um, five B talks about right-of-way, so right-of-way is acquired in the name of the jurisdiction in which it would go to. So, if there's land to be acquired on the west side of the road, it would be acquired in the name of the city. Now, the right-of-way acquisition on the west side of the road's already been done, it was done years ago, so it's, it's prepared for this. Project cost is estimated to be about six hundred thousand dollars. Uh, eight goes through the costs, again, that's, the grant is for eighty percent of up to a million dollars. But there's where it specifically says the city's responsible for ten percent of the eligible project cost, but the maximum's twenty-five thousand dollars. So it, it will be twenty-five thousand, because that'll be more than, more than ten percent of the project cost. Next paragraph down is where they talk about how things are paid, and that, that shows that the money is funneled through the, through the Sack County funds to, to pay for it. And then they would invoice us for twenty-five thousand dollars. Final paragraph of number eight, though, is, was the only thing that Aaron had raised as issue two, that if the project is not carried to completion, the city's responsible for fifty percent of the cost. And, you know, worst case on that probably is that they do a lot of engineering, and something happens and it doesn't proceed. Um, we could be on the hook for a lot of engineering fees, but you basically for, I think for that to happen would be that the grant was somehow withdrawn, and, you know, that would, I'd say it'd take an act of Congress, but something more than an act of Congress to withdraw that grant, so it, it, just know that it's there, but.
Indian barrier.
So the grant money's coming in first.
Grant money is, it's, it's reimbursement money, so the county's reimbursed after they pay, so. But that was my last thing on it. Again, Aaron's reviewed, reviewed the agreement, we recommend approval.
We have a motion on fourteen nineteen?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Hoss.
Yes.
Stenkamp.
Yes.
Woltman.
Okay, sip and sample.
Little update on sip and sample, and everything's coming together actually real nice. So on the seventh of June, it's proposed, you know, if the county agree, or excuse me, the council agrees to, to close Main Street, we would have sip and sample on Main Street again. They have seven wineries, six of them are confirmed, and, and one of them's probably confirmed. So we're looking at seven wineries, two breweries, microbreweries to come also. And then, last count, it was like twenty-one other vendors of these, you know, the kind of little vendor shops that women like to go shopping at from place to place. Anyway, so it'll.
You do too.
Oh, God, absolutely, I'm all about the handbags.
How many, how many have we had in the past?
Not that many.
Yeah, it's more wineries this time, so that, that's really the big thing is, is that we'll have a sufficient number of wineries. And really looking for, forward to a good event. I think they got a nice lineup ready to go, they got some entertainment, one of the bands who's performing that night at the pier is performing uptown. They're still working with Teresa to see if they had entertainment with Teresa or not, so.
What time's this turn?
Uh, it's running two to five on Saturday, June seventh. And then six o'clock is a Stone Pier concert. So it's, makes for a nice afternoon and evening. One of the things that is different this year is, is the permitting, the alcohol permitting on it, so the, uh, community club will get a permit, you know, if the council approves the permit, they, they would hold the liquor license on this. So they had to get dram shop insurance, and then they would hold this liquor license. So the wineries do the sampling, and when it comes time to sell bottles of wine, community club volunteers actually gotta sell it out of a different tent. Just a, kind of a strange setup, but the wineries, wineries are not the permitted people for the day, so the, the permit is held by the community club, they're the only ones that can sell product.
So then, uh, their sales go back to, they keep track of whose, whose product it was?
We'll keep track of whose product it was, and, you know, it just ends up being, uh, in and out on the money, but we wanna do what we need to, to comply, and. We've found it to be real important to the wineries. I think that's one of the reasons why we had a little bit more luck at wineries this year, is because we're
The sales.
compliant without a doubt, and they don't have any concerns, so. Um, so it'd be a couple things, we'd ask the council to approve that, the liquor license, and then the second thing would be to approve, uh, closure of Main Street. And that would be from third to fifth, only Main Street, not closing any of Third Street or Fifth Street.
So we need a motion to approve the Lakeview Community Club's liquor license for the sip and sample.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
What's Gus?
No.
Dave?
Dave's second.
Kemp?
Okay, roll call.
Stenkamp.
Yes.
Woltman.
Yep.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Hoss.
Yes.
We need a motion on closing the streets for the sip and sample? No, Gus.
Okay.
Okay. Your second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Hoss. Stenkamp.
Yes.
Woltman.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes, should've said no one.
Okay, Public Works Director report, we got one?
Yep.
Got any good news?
Well, no.
No?
We've been working down at the sewer plant, we got the clarifier up and running finally today, we're still waiting for one part, I think I'm gonna have Donnie or, or the welding shop out here rebuild it, because it'll be a lot cheaper than ordering it from a company. And, but it's a half-inch plate of aluminum, and in fourteen years, it's already completely corroded away. I took Scott down and showed it to him, and, and, uh, the bracing rods down the bottom, we completely rebuilt all those, and, and got that one up and running. We actually need to suck the other one down now, means why the one we worked on was in bad shape, I'm betting the other one's the same way. The reason we found it is because in the winter time, we shoved one of them down, because they freeze, and so we sucked it down, cleaned it all out and everything, and then we found all this stuff wrong. So, um, it's taken till now, because it, well, it got cold, and it just couldn't work, and there was all ice, so. So we got that up and going. Um, the park, uh, rebuild's going pretty good, I think we're gonna pour concrete down there tomorrow. Little change in the plans today.
Yes.
Otherwise, we'd be ready.
Got a phone call on that today about, we're figuring on pouring this pad, and, and then he, the salesman calls me, he says, geez, there's some of these main structures, he said, that aren't made to, to bolt on that pad, they have got to be mounted twenty-four inches in, in, in cement, in the dirt, so. We had to leave this big hole in our pad now, and we will mount these things in, in, in the ground and cement them in after the fact, so.
So they, the park board, they called me that day, or I talked to them today about this, they're worried about drilling a hole in that cement, or that it won't be cured out by this week.
I would, that's why we're in for tomorrow, that'll give you about four to five days. I, I don't think you're gonna bolt too many things down on Friday. It's gonna take you all day, I think, just to sort pieces out.
I told him I would bring it up.
Yeah, and Scott and I have talked about that too, and we're thinking where we're leaving the hole in the middle, that centerpiece, we think Bill can reach it with his digger truck, because you can't drive on the concrete yet. So I'm thinking Bill will be able to reach out there, dig the, is it sixteen holes?
Sixteen, sixteen holes and a couple of big holes.
Yeah, and they're two-foot holes, two-foot deep, so I'm hoping that he can reach it, otherwise, you can put some other stuff together and kinda pass over that for a few days. And as far as bolting them down, you're not gonna bolt them down probably until the whole structure's put together, then you're gonna go hit the holes, and so I think we'll, we'll have plenty of cure, we'll have at least a week, I think, Terry.
Well, I just told him I would bring it up.
Yeah, it's a good question, because I, Scott and I have argued.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we had that discussion.
So, but, uh, on, uh, the, the bad thing coming up here is that lift station out there by Reggie Orbecks. Constantly getting callouts in the middle of the night to fix this thing, and, and, uh, I mean, we're getting a lot of money just tied up in labor going out after hours fixing this thing. It happened three times this weekend, a couple times during the week last week, and then the weekend before, a couple of times. And, um, uh, we're down to really one pump in there now, and, uh, today we went out there, tore the whole thing apart, and, and, um, we got the second pump running, I don't know how long it's gonna last. But I got electric pump, looking at options. You know, when Blackhawk Water Development did that, they kinda cut some corners and put a four-foot pit instead of a six-foot pit, that's one of our big problems. Because they, um, there's a cleaning screen that, if it could be redesigned, we could pull this basket up, maybe catch the diapers or whatever's plugging this thing up. But there, the screen is down there, it's on the rail system, no way to get it out of the hole, because it's too small of a pit. The screen is actually this far from the wall, because of the curve of the four-foot, well, the stuff just comes in and falls behind the, the screen. It, it doesn't even reach the screen, but there's no way to get the screen out to work on it anyway, guys, to dump it, so, because the pit's too small, it's only a four-foot pit, we went out and measured it, so. Uh, I had electric pump, him and I went out there one day, he started working up some prices, he can't get him in a four-foot pit, he can't get two pumps in a four-foot pit. You know, because we were looking at going with a grinder pump, it's submersible, um, just the pumps were twenty-eight thousand dollars for two pumps. Now, I've called a company in Oklahoma City, the pump that are in there, they don't make anymore. But they have a replacement, doesn't pump as many gallons per minute, but that isn't a factor, because I, we've been keeping records since I took over, they run approximately four hours a week, so they're not running it a lot, but, um, electric pumpers pursuing, because they sell that pump now, or they sell that lift station, so they're looking at a retrofit, and I haven't, he hasn't gotten back to me on a price on that. But I don't know that that's gonna cure our problem, and unless the pumps are so worn out, the guy in Oklahoma City said if they're twenty years old, he said they're only pumping fifty percent capacity. Which is no big deal if it ain't plugging up.
But if it's plugged up, even if pumping at a hundred percent.
I think the tolerances are so loose, the tolerances, that the diapers get sucked in, just going around the valute and getting caught in there, and that's what it, I mean, every time we tear apart, guys, it's just a big ball, and you can't even see the impeller, it's, it's just diapers or rags or whatever it may be.
This is the same stuff that keeps getting dumped in there all the time, that we can't figure out who's doing it?
Right. The only, yeah, yeah. And I don't know what to do, I mean, you know, I've talked to everybody out there, I've actually went and talked to them all, except for Lois Kettering, that's the only one I've got to talk to, but I, I can't see her doing that, so. But, uh, you just need to be aware of that. I think we're gonna have to spend some money out there.
What's the cost for a new pit, a bigger pit?
I have no idea, we were looking at, uh, I did some calculations on a six-foot pit today, every, every foot is three hundred seventy-five gallons. If you go to, on a four-foot, if you go to a six-foot, did I tell you?
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred and some gallons, but the big thing is getting them in the hole, Dave, you know, that, two pumps side by side won't fit in a four-foot hole.
Right.
Um, Jim Gray is the electric pump salesman, he didn't think it would work. So, I think if you're gonna go that route, you're looking at a lot of dollars, I'll bet you're gonna spend forty to fifty grand.
But if we spend thirty grand on a new pump, that's not guaranteed that problem's gonna be fixed.
Well, if we go to submersibles, it'll be a grinder pump, it'll actually heat it up as it comes in there.
But we could do that with the current pit?
No, no.
Also, maybe we'd have to do a bigger pit anyway?
Probably the cheaper thing to do is maybe put one pump in, buy one pump and try it, and see if it plugs that side up. Because they, they alternate, one time this pump runs, the next time this pump runs. And they do that, I mean, it's automatically done that way, and, uh, so you get the same hours on each pump. But what I'm thinking, if we try one pump, because I think this company out of Oklahoma City said thirty-eight hundred dollars for that pump. I don't think that included a motor or anything, but if the motor that we have will retrofit over to it, then there's nothing wrong with the motor. There are ball door motor in there, and that's the only pumps we have that are that way, that you can actually reuse that motor possibly in this new, if, if we got just the impeller and the valute.
So if, if we go that direction, and it doesn't work.
You're out, or, or five thousand bucks you're gonna be out.
Okay, not the cost of the pump.
Well, you're out the cost of the pump, because they're not gonna take it back.
Well, but.
But we do have, we do have two more of these down the line that are, that are twenty years old, they've only plugged up two, two to three times maybe? I really can't tell you how many.
Probably got a few more than that, we'll just fix them though, and then we'll tell you about it.
Yeah. That's good. But anyway, uh, we can move that pump down to that next lift station down, because there's four pumps out there that are all the same. And if you had a grinder pump where it's coming in, that lift station down there probably wouldn't plug up. And it doesn't seem to affect our submersibles around the lake, because it's going through. And it doesn't seem to affect our submersibles around the lake because it's going through
Six or seven.
Six, six more lift stations before it gets to the sewer plant, but it doesn't seem to bother those, but.
Did we catch those down here at the sewer plant then?
Well, that new, the new muffin monster that we put in, that grinds it all up. But uh, that was about twenty-seven or twenty-eight thousand.
Muffin minded.
They call it muffin monster.
Well, it was twenty-eight thousand dollars for that to be too.
But it does work good.
So I, I got a question for you, now we usually budget, I just check, twenty thousand dollars a year for, for any pump, lift station to work on. I guess, would it be the due diligence if we find out if we did it right? What it would cost us to do that?
I can have Jim do that and, and um, I think you're, I don't think you need to go through electric pump to look at putting in a tile. You know, Gussie, you can put that tile in, it's about ten foot deep. Um, you know, this is probably the year to do it because it's so dry, you know.
I'm not so sure, we shouldn't look at an eight foot instead of a six for down the line. I mean, the price shouldn't be much further.
It probably wouldn't be much difference, no Gus, I, I mean, I can do the calculations, I mean, it's, it's a lot more gallons. Now, my only thing is that if we're pumping, they're supposed to be pumping two hundred fifty gallon a minute, but they're probably pumping a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five is what the guy says. So if you've got an eight foot pit that's holding a thousand gallons, it's gonna get septic and start stinking. That'd be my only question, that, for homeowners around there. That, and, and Jim Gray would, he could do them, he, he could tell us that. You know, because we know how many hours they're pumping every, every week.
Now, I was just thinking down the road, more people hooked onto that line.
Um, yeah. See like Van Mevers and Jake could go either way, I mean, it, it gravity flows up to where the, the thirty acres bathhouse is, that's where it starts gravity flowing the other direction.
Yeah, just, just a reminder to, we have an annexation agreement with everybody out there that says everything west of Roth is sewed to the west, so. So the, yeah, Van Mevers or Thirty Acres or Jake or whoever, that would have to be sewed to the west.
So that wouldn't affect adding on unless somebody would develop out there, out into that field of Tegels or.
Yeah, on to the south.
Yeah, and, and the big thing is you'll be putting another lift station in then because that sewer's only two foot deep. You know, that one you put in.
It's on a corner, well.
Yeah, Friar's about two and a half foot.
I think they covered, yeah, they put a little dirt over.
Yeah, it ain't very deep though.
No.
Not enough to really go out into that field because the ground goes down that much, you know. So, you know, if you ever look at, you're gonna, if you're gonna put a big development out there, you're gonna be doing lift stations all the way into town. You know, like Don Durner's, you're at capacity there right now, at full capacity. Just by adding that side of the lake here a few years back, you know, twenty years, okay, whenever we did that.
We'd done a lift station study several years ago and found out that the, the constraining lift station out there is the one at Don Durner's. That's the one that, that constrains the system most, so that we have since up, upsized all the pumps and done whatever we could.
The impeller.
Or the impeller.
Yeah.
And really haven't had much problem with it since then. Of course, it hadn't rained, we used to slug like crazy.
I guarantee you, we get rain, it'll, it'll back up again. It's a six inch pressure main out there and you can only push so much water through a six inch pipe. That's the problem. Because when it gets to Jukey Poots', if it gets full there, it can either go to Gary Wickers or down toward TCT Trucking and dump in down at the bottom of the hill, uh, by Larry Howser's fields or, or gravity. It pressure feeds to, oh, maybe four hundred yards short of Graham Hoag's, then gravity flows the rest of the way. And then goes down to Larry Howser's field and so it can go two ways out there once it gets past Durner's.
So our plan in a nutshell is to do what with this station in the near future?
Well, I'm waiting on Jim Gray to give us some, get some, get some prices and I just want you to be aware that we're working on it, but we're, it's broke down four or five times a week. And it ain't getting better. Probably the one thing, what lasted the longest, I had Pete Howell in town and they got the big sucker and we sucked that whole lift station out and got all the debris that ain't getting in the pump every time. And then it just keeps adding up, pretty soon it takes a whole slug of them in and, and uh, you know, but I don't know how long that really lasted, but we had the least amount of problems when I did suck that out that time.
Two months?
Yeah, maybe, yeah, about two months, I'm guessing that, but um, didn't seem, that did help.
A new jetter, would that help?
No. And Bill's, Bill's back that he has down there, it won't suck him through it. It's not a big enough pipe, it plugs that pipe up.
So I guess, just wait until we get.
I'll, I'm gonna have, I'll get ahold of Jim Gray too once and see, he was here last week and we had dinner together. He's working on it for us. But we pretty much blew our budget this year already.
Oh yeah.
I mean, with that muffin monster, that took this year's budget and destroyed it.
That's, that's all the good news we're gonna get from you tonight?
You can go home now.
Thank you Lon.
Thanks Lon.
Administrator report.
Yeah, um, the first thing is this, is this budget amendment. Uh, this would be on the council meeting for next time, we'd hold a public hearing on it, but um, take a look at page twenty-three. This would, this would say that we have a couple of amendments on the, on the revenue side of things. A little thirty-five hundred dollars for refunds and reimbursement, then a hundred and thirty thousand dollars uh, in what they call charges for services, that includes all of our, uh, all of our utility fees. Now, that primarily is electric fees because the winter was so darn cold that our, our revenues are up quite a little bit. Now, you're also gonna see that our wholesale power costs are up quite a bit, so that, that offset that. We would need an amendment then on the bottom on the expenses. Twenty-nine thousand five hundred would be the proposed amendment on the uh, for police, and that's all police related. And that pretty much all has to do with sending people to the academy and covering the additional time, paying for the training and then uh, uniform allowance was way up because of that, too hiring, too new people. Um, culture and recreation, that deals with the library, buying more memorial books and then they did that HVAC uh, project there and spent some of their trust and agency money on. General government would be up five thousand dollars, that's building maintenance here, dealing with the, the ceiling upstairs and then utility costs were up. Capital projects up a little bit on that, but that's primarily the sewer lining up at Eighth Street, which was actually budgeted in the prior year but spent in this year. And then the billboard up on the highway. The big one is the expenses in what they call business type or enterprise funds and that's all the utilities. So there's some increases in water wages, utilities, uh, and then bought quite a few more water meters. And we continue to install water meters and if Lon had more water meters, we'd get more in. Now, it's been just really busy with that, you have a lot of plumbers putting in meters now, so as, as cabin owners open up, they've been real successful in getting a lot of them switched over. Uh, lift stations and sewer plant and again, that muffin monster and the uh, composite sampler's out at the sewer plant. And, but the big thing is wholesale power, so the wholesale power costs were actually up uh, just slightly less than what the uh, uh, increased revenue was, so. Anyway, this would be the, the amendment, it's in the paper this week and then it would be on the council meeting next time. Uh, a few other things for you though. Playground installation is Friday and we're looking for volunteers for whoever might want to come down and help install the playground equipment on Friday.
Might be a bad day for a lot of people now. I mean Friday instead of Saturday.
Well, and it's Friday and Saturday, so we'll, we'll, I trust that we're gonna work both days. Lon's not nearly as optimistic as I am, I think we'll get that thing mostly installed and he's.
It's gonna be a lot harder than the last one, guys.
Have you seen the two hundred and fifty pieces laying down there by the park? You know, it's.
Comes with directions?
I've handled a hundred and twenty-five of them already.
I'm good, we appreciate your experience. If we volunteer, do we bring tools?
Battery powered drills. That would be what would be needed.
And it'd be good to lead by example, we need the council there in full strength.
Drive ratchet, guys.
Three eights drive ratchet.
So if you don't know how to run those or you don't know what that is?
You, a lot of, a lot of people stand there and hold the post up while the other parts are attached to it.
We need a lot of holders last time.
That takes time, just taking the guardboard off and stuff.
And there's different things, so some could work on some, some could on some others.
There's a lot of stuff to do.
I can help a little in between bus routes. What, what time are you starting Friday?
We're asking for volunteers at nine o'clock. Staff will be down there starting up right away, but uh, I don't know, looking for volunteers around eight.
So it's a committee that kinda got this going. Did he say nine?
Pardon me?
He said eight.
Park board committee is that who's doing that, sir?
Yeah, the park board, the Fear Twenty-Five Committee.
Staff will be there.
Now, men's, men's club is onboard for some labor. So, I don't know how many, but they've, they're onboard, they said. But you gotta rely on their volunteers too, so we'll see how many show up then.
With my leg up in the air, I'll, I could help probably, so.
Very good.
If they decide to take it out, why then?
Is there someone from the company to oversee this or?
Yes. One installer comes to organize it. Yep.
The guy last time wasn't that good.
Yeah, I'm sure put playground and grab a beer. Rup beer.
We have received our final wastewater treatment permit. And uh, they made no changes to that draft permit. We had asked them for a couple of changes. One of them dealt on some sampling locations whether before or after disinfection. They have not made any of those changes statewide on any of those. Um, so that, that's just a, you know, a, another instance where it's just gonna end up requiring that we sample at another location and it ends up costing us more money for really questionable return on what the testing data could be. But, and then the other thing is to test for this different type of nitrogen, TKN. And uh, it's something where our limit would be just so dramatically higher than what we ever test at. That you, again, you question why we would have to test for this. We've been doing sample testing and generally it, it comes in, you know, five percent of the limit or less, you know, it, it's just almost negligible. We had a couple of tests that have been a little higher up the scale. Anyway, that's another one of those things that statewide they have not uh, been willing to take those out of the permit, so. The permit is the same as what was, what was proposed in the draft. And that's the same timeline on, uh, you know, this, uh, the permit refers to installing the disinfection. And that would be the one major project to be done and that's timeline is still the same as what it would be to install by twenty seventeen. Uh, Ruth brought this issue up as we're working on those sites at the campground. And we're getting new picnic tables, then we'll get some more new picnic tables again this year. She'd like to rotate out the ones that aren't necessarily any good, as good. And that would be rusted frames, this type of stuff, we'll rotate those out. Um, but she said they might be good to somebody and we, and would suggest that we would sell those and we could have up to twenty picnic tables where we'd be selling our worst ones.
Taking bids?
Yeah, I, probably not, you know, you set a price on them and, and people would come by them. And my number's around twenty dollars.
Is that? They come and get them?
Yeah, don't cost us nothing, we're lucky.
Can you put them in lots of, so many, so they get one bad one and so they get rid of all of them?
I'm sure there'll be twenty of them and.
Buy one and get one for.
And people will be down there sorting through them, figuring out the one that won.
They will.
First come, first served.
Twenty dollars first come, first served?
Yep.
That's your three or four left? Fire where you get, take it and go.
Sure. We had a public meeting on the, uh, park board had a public meeting on the Emerald Dashboard this past Saturday. And we had some people turn out, we had seven members of the public there. Just know that uh, there'll be no proposed changes to that policy that was talked to, uh, they talked to the council about it once, they'll be at the next council meeting encouraging you to formally adopt that policy. But with that would come, you know, some expectation that at least in future budget years, there's more money put aside for tree removal. So they will be at the next council meeting discussing that. Um, we'll be working with our engineer on the bathhouse project. And the date when he will be here, they'll have several of their staff members here on May twenty-ninth at one o'clock. And we'll meet down there at the, at the site, at the bathhouse site, anybody's welcome to come. But this would be really the best opportunity to have any input about the project design. So camp staff will be there, I hope Lon will be there. Going through the, uh, really what they would like to see in this new building. Because I know that the camp staff has some opinions of what they'd like. Uh, last thing that I have is, is the epic Iowa road trip here on Thursday night. Um, so we'll be meeting for dinner out at, uh, out at Ryan's. Just need to know for sure who could show up for dinner around seven. Are you golfing Gus?
On the twenty-ninth?
This, this Thursday, eight o'clock.
Yeah, what time is that?
Seven o'clock.
Coming back from Fargo. Bright eyed bushy deer.
Dave?
I'll be there.
Now, um, the plan for the evening is, is really just simply that, that the bus and, and its participants, which are some magazine people, state tourism people, but a couple of them are movie, and, uh, not movie makers, filmmakers. Then one of them is kind of, I think, famous on the YouTube scene as this Iowa nice guy or something like that is, is who it is. But he's, what they do is they're, they go from spot to spot across the state and they shoot a little bit of video footage at each spot. So, uh, you know, we, we get to have dinner with them and, and they'll stay here for the night. So we get them for a little longer than a lot of the other communities, but really when they get here, and they get here at seven, all that it would be is dinner and we would, uh, we'll just informally talk with them during dinnertime. There isn't, there's no program, no anything like that, I've got some handouts ready to go, I emailed them out to you. So those will be used kind of as talking points and they will have that stuff ahead of time. But the other thing is that, is that we'll, Jimmy Stock's working with his bike club and the bike club will probably just happen to be out there at the same time. And, you know, we just wanna show some things happening and try to make for a, for a, a good visual image of what's going on in camp. Basically what it is. Anyway, that's all that I have.
You got, anybody got anything else you wanna bring up? Nuisance is going well?
Yeah.
Ted, nuisances are going well?
Yeah, there, we did send a, I ended up sending that notice out, I couldn't catch them there for like three days. I decided to go ahead and send it, so they didn't get my out.
It's a formal one for Egyptian Berry Walt to have them get rid of that. Still planning on doing it, it's just a matter of getting it scheduled in. It'll be, it'll be June before we do it.
Somewhere there.
John.
Get your jackhammer out.
John's lawsuit dropped that finally.
Oh, he did.
It's out there?
So Henry dropped his.
So all Dory now, are they friends now?
No.
Civil, that's big.
Well, that part's done, I mean, that's what Henry's holding out for. He dropped his while you, you know, Henry dropped his.
Well, you know what they did.
How about getting?
Well, he's not giving up. I mean, hell, there'll be something coming down the road and he'll try.
Maybe he'll get an easter from somebody.
Could happen.
Gotta work with, I gotta talk with Danny now and if if everything's dropped, maybe hopefully he changes his mind.
Did Henry clean up that sewer pipe that was sticking up and get rid of that damn thing?
Nope.
There's a sewer pipe out back behind him.
Do you wanna keep that on record?
Sure. In my file.
Check with him.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
Second motion.
Oh. Dave seconded, in the adjourn.
You know, I I found that awfully odd. Can I say I'm running for city.